The Mecklenburg County Election Debates are a service of WTVI, Mecklenburg County, and the League of Women Voters of Charlotte Mecklenburg. The views and opinions expressed in these debates are those of the candidates and do not necessarily represent the views of WTVI, its management, Mecklenburg County, or the League of Women Voters.
WTVI PBS Charlotte. And the League of Women Voters present Election Debate 2015.
And hello, I'm Jeff Reiven-Bark with WTVI PBS Charlotte. We're delighted you could join us for the Charlotte City Council at Large Debate sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Charlotte Mecklenburg. There are seven candidates in this race and four open seats. Now, the questions for the debate were provided by the League of Women Voters of Charlotte Mecklenburg. The questions were not shared in advance with the candidates. I will call on the candidates in random order to answer the questions. They will have one minute to answer each question. If you would like to challenge your fellow candidates, you may raise your yellow card and you'll have 30 seconds to respond. Each candidate will have three challenges in this debate. There are no opening statements, but each candidate will have the opportunity to make a 30-second closing statement. And now, let's meet the candidates for Charlotte City Council at Large. They are Pablo Carvajal, Julie Iselt, Claire Green Fallon, Vi Lyles, James Muggie Mitchell, John K. Powell Jr., and David Michael Rice was unable to be with us today. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And we will begin with the very first question, and it will go to Pablo Carvajal. The question is, "Many citizens are concerned that council has a short-term vision about city issues. What is your long-term vision for Charlotte? And how can you convince other council members to support big-picture thinking on issues such as the need for public transportation and economic development linked to social mobility?"
That's a really good question. My vision for Charlotte encompasses a Charlotte that is there to meet the candidates, I'm sorry, the citizens, at the door as opposed to halfway there. We want to make sure that Charlotte is a place for opportunity for everyone. I came here as an immigrant to Charlotte. I'm very appreciative of the opportunities afforded to me. We've got to do our job and go back to the basics in our local government. In terms of transportation, we have to focus on the sidewalks, the roads, the basic things that see the government ought to focus on, and stop spending our tax money on projects that oftentimes seem glamorous and nostalgic. I think that's meeting the people at the door. In terms of economic development, I would encourage our city to engage with our city leaders as well as those in our community to make sure that we offer jobs and education for the future of our citizens.
All right, thank you. Julie Iselt, your response.
So, to me, the broader picture has got to include transportation. I would like to see us work on a comprehensive transportation plan that is financed by other vehicles and explore whether or not we can incorporate private-public partnerships, authorities such as one that's used for the airport where the debt is not on the balance sheet of the city, perhaps bringing in the private community, the private sector that has something to benefit from expanded transportation, i.e. developers. From an economic development standpoint, there is also an incentive for the private sector to get involved in transportation because if we are a city that's easy to get around, that is more affordable to live in, companies are going to want to bring their employees here. So, for me, a great part of it is transportation as well as education. And I think transportation can also be a foundation for how we get kids around to different schools and to have school options as well.
All right, thank you. Claire Green Fallon, your response.
It's a one-way wraparound program which would serve each sector: jobs, economics, the movement of Charlotte to better places for people to live, and that would have been an east-west rail. If we had an east-west rail, it would solve the economic problems of the east side and the west side. It would have created jobs. It would have given people a place to live. The east and west side have wonderful housing. It needs some repair. It needs some upgrading, but it's wonderful. We cannot annex our way anymore out of problems. We need to connect Charlotte, and that means we have a north-south light rail. We need an east-west light rail with a gateway at the middle so that you can get to a job anyplace and schooling anyplace.
All right. And once again, the question for the last three candidates, "Many citizens are concerned that council has a short-term vision about city issues. What is your long-term vision for Charlotte? And how can you convince other council members to support big-picture thinking on issues such as the need for public transportation and economic development linked to social mobility?" And we begin with you, Vi Lyles.
Thank you for the question. I have a very simple vision for our community, and it is a vision that says for everyone that chooses to live in Charlotte that they feel like they can afford to live here, they can work here, and they can be safe in their homes. I believe that those are the key components for any place that wants to be a livable city. We need to create opportunities for, as others have said, our transportation network. And I have to say, we have to include in that network roads. We need to include our light rail. We need more bus stops. But even more importantly, we need to connect the gaps in our sidewalks, and we need to allow people to have opportunities for biking. The second part of it is jobs. We need to bring in jobs so that everyone across the spectrum, both people that are working every day to the top of the rank. And then, the final thing, all neighborhoods need to be safe. People need to feel like they live in the best neighborhood in Charlotte. They may be different neighborhoods, but they all feel really great about it.
All right, Vi Lyles, thank you. James Muggie Mitchell, your response.
Thank you for the question. I think from a public transit standpoint, my vision is to make sure that we continue to provide those means of transportation, allow our citizens to be able to get to work and enjoy a quality of life. That's why I was very adamant about the Rosa Park Transit System when we built that. That's why I'm adamant about the streetcar for the east and west. And we have a great success record that when we provide public transportation, economic development will occur. Just look at Southend. Now, we have more mixed income development. We have job creation, and economic development is the key. We need to make sure more entrepreneur companies thrive in Charlotte. We need to make sure more small businesses, both minority and women, don't thrive in our community because it's about job creation. When you look at 38,000 new citizens coming to our community, they're coming for one reason only: it's a great place. But public transit and economic development will make Charlotte a better place for all our citizens.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Powell.
Yes, thank you very much. What's important to understand is that our city thrives on business. Our city thrives on transportation. Our city thrives on safety. And those are the three key elements, the three key points that I think is vital for our citizens here. You know, when we create jobs, it's not only the big corporate jobs that come into town, but it's that 70% that drives the engine of our economic development and growth. That's a small businessman, the entrepreneur like myself, so that's essential. When we talk about transportation, yes, we have to have the means, the affordable means to get from point A to point B, from our homes to our jobs and vice versa. Third, dealing with public safety. If we cannot attract business and people to go to work, to live in Charlotte, and understand that we have a safe environment for those people to live and nurture and grow, then we're missing the boat. So, that's encompassing all the key elements that are a part of my platform, but more importantly, understanding the fact that we have to be able to afford all these things. And that's where a business sense comes into mind, comes into play, and that's how we address all these issues.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Our second question is, "Given the need for Charlotte improvements that voters and candidates have identified, including transportation, housing, and economic development, how would you find the resources to tackle them? Would you vote to raise taxes? Yes or no?" And we'll start with you, Julie Iselt.
I don't think going to a tax increase should ever be the first line of defense. I think that we've got to explore other ways to do that, and I mentioned that. My background is banking. I've been in international banking in my career, well, both on the manufacturing and banking side, and so I've worked with infrastructural financing. And I think that we've got to explore other ways that we can finance these projects that we haven't looked at before. And of course, we've got to look at the budget and say, is it updated? Is it really meeting the needs of the community? Are there items in there that we're addressing, needs that the community no longer has? So, balancing the budget for a 24th-century city and also looking at other financing vehicles that we haven't explored before. And I've been talking to people in the investment community, and I know that there are things that other cities are doing that we could be exploring.
All right, thank you, Julie Iselt. Claire Green Fallon, your response.
I'm going to be very practical about it. Right this moment, I need police on the street, all right? We don't have them as much as we need. We've grown very, very fast, and we have not taken care of our infrastructure. If people want safety, then we need police on the street, which costs money. We have to learn to do things properly, and that is not give away a lot of money to things that don't affect infrastructure. We have to go back to the basics.
All right. Vi Lyles.
I have over 18 years of budget experience. When I was the city's budget director, we didn't have one tax increase during that 18-year time period. But today is a different time. We have a lot of growth in our community. We have lots of needs. If we're going to talk about a transportation network, we're going to need to figure out how to do infrastructure. The second thing, if we're going to talk about a livable and safe community, we've got to invest in those things that make a difference, often having police programs, policing. All of those things do make a difference. I think that tax increases are very, very tough decisions. We need to look at every other choice that we have, but as a growing city, I would say to the community that you have to ask, what do you want? And we need to reflect that. If it's not a tax increase, what would you like to see us not do? And if you're willing to pay for it, what should we be doing? So, I look to the community for that guidance.
All right, thank you. James Mitchell, your reply.
Yes. Raising taxes should never be option number one. I think when you look at how do we make sure Charlotte becomes a great, quality city? We look at maybe Raleigh and our federal level. I think as the consensus build over the years, I have reached out to our state delegation, how they can fund certain priorities we have, even on the federal level. I would tell you, when we first started looking at the goal line, we received about a $750,000 grant on the federal level. So, we need to make sure that we do this in a collaborative effort with our other elected officials body, as well as listen to the citizen. We all face tough decisions. We always want our community to move forward. And transportation, maybe we look at a way to have public-private partnership as a way to address some of our transportation issues. We clearly have done it on the economic development side, having a public-private partnership. So, as we have discussion, I would like to engage like I did as a district two rep. When I went to the people, had town hall meetings, this is your budget, this is your city, and I want to be your voice on city council.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Mr. John Powell, your reply.
Thank you. I think it's important to understand, you know, we have to live within our means. I don't know about you, but I know in our family, we have to understand what's necessary, what we would like, and then deal with the specifics. Understand what we need for, in this case, our city. You know, it's great to have new and glittery and glamorous things and shiny things for our city, but we have to take care of what our city is, our history, our infrastructure. So, if you don't have the means to do that, then taxation would be the last-ditch effort. But I think we can avoid that because what you have to understand, we have 44 people a day coming to our town, moving to this town. We have a lot to offer. And when you keep running it into Economics 101, it's a supply and demand. We're increasing our tax base, and if we do that by investing in our infrastructure to make it the type of town that we want to live in, that people can travel, can get around in, can feel safe being here, then we have these people coming in, and that way we avoid the tax rate increases.
All right, your time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Pablo Carvajal, your reply.
Yes, we have to look at the fact that we have over 30,000 people coming to our city each year. That suggests that people are flocking to North Carolina, to Charlotte because we are a lower-tax state. So, we have to make sure that Charlotte is a place that is limiting tax increases, that is low fee, that is low or limited bureaucracy, so that we can propel people who want to innovate, who want to create businesses and create ideas, and flourish those ideas into our city. We also have to consider the fact that, as Mr. John Powell said, our tax base is not decreasing, it's actually increasing. So, we have to find ways to make sure that the budget is balanced. We have to find ways that we are focusing on the basics of our local government, focusing on community safety, on transportation, on waste management, and economic development. In terms of economic development, where are the incentives for small businesses? We have to cut back also on corporate welfare here in our city.
All right, thank you. Our third question for this debate, "Recent incidents across the nation have raised public awareness about inequities in police policies. How do you hold the police department accountable for the changes that need to be made?" And we will start with you, Claire Green Fallon.
All righty, we hold them responsible. They have changed the way they police. They're more in the community right now. They're doing different things in the academy in how they teach. They become very community-oriented. I know our chief is sending people in on his third shift into the communities to talk to the children, to bring them popcorn and pretzels, and just sit with them and talk. They're helping them with reading. When you know the policeman on the beat, it's easy to go to them when you have a problem, and it's easy to identify that they are not the enemy, and that's what we have to stress. But we also have to be aware that the police morale is way, way down because they've been under attack all over the country. They are a line of defense. If you make them so that they do not feel that they are backed, you don't have a line of defense.
All right, thank you. Vi Lyles, your reply.
For police accountability, I think there are several aspects to look for. One, the first thing, we need to make sure that we have a good chief in place, and I think we made a great decision. We had Chief Monroe, now Chief Putney. We know that they are going to look at national trends where this has been happening. We need to adjust our community policing policies to address that. We also need to go back and look at our 2008 study on strategies to make neighborhoods safer and to lower crime. So, I think we need to specifically actually have a strategy. But more importantly, I think that we need to think about the improvements that we're making. This year, the council approved the idea that you could come into the police and you could make a complaint if you felt like there was profiling going on. And then, finally, I say, the most important part of any policing strategy is the officer. We need to hire officers at an adequate wage. We need to make sure that they're trained and that they're integrated in the community. That makes the true difference and builds accountability.
All right, thank you. Mr. James Mitchell.
Thank you. First of all, I have to agree with some of the comments made. We hired the right person to be the chief of police, Chief Putney. Secondly, though, I really applaud the police for what they've done, reaching out to the community. We have cops and barbers. I think it was a great initiative with citizens at barber shop, working with our police officer on educating how to work with police officer, how does a police officer work with community. I think those new initiatives will bring more trust with our police officer and engage the community more. And then, there's Crime Watch. I think our police officers do an excellent job of telling the neighbors, get involved, it's your community. How can we work together and to make sure your community is safe? And thirdly, it is about hiring. I can remember when you talk about 38,000 new citizens coming to a city each year, when you think about the growth, I do think we need more resource officer, more police officers to hire to make sure our community is safe. And last but certainly not least, putting our neighborhood resource officer back in the school would be another initiative that I would be an advocate for.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Mr. John Powell.
Yes, sir. When you're talking about police accountability, you talk about safety in our neighborhoods. I think what city council did this last year is a real trendsetter, approving the money for the body cameras. What this does, this protects our citizens and also protects our police officers as well. That's when you talk about accountability, going back and forth, covering and taking care of everybody in our neighborhood. You know, when we're talking about hiring officers, we definitely need to do this, but we need to pay attention to how we're hiring these officers. You know, if we hire officers that look like you and look like the neighborhood, then there's going to be a more openness involved with the communities. That's what I've heard from different communities that I've traveled to. So, when Chief Monroe introduced the cops and barbers, and Chief Putney continues on with this effort of reaching out to community, that's where your accountability comes into. And I could not be prouder that I've known both men, been able to talk to both men about the forces that they're facing and reaching out to our community.
All right, thank you, Mr. Powell. And now, we go over to my right, Pablo Carvajal, your reply.
Yes, community safety is of utmost importance here in Charlotte. Along with that comes a reflection of people who are accountable for their actions within our government. Police is part of our government. We have to renew that trust between the citizen and our local government. Part of the efforts that will continue to amend that situation that we are seeing nationally is deteriorating between the police and our citizens are programs like cops and barbers, engaging the community, engaging the police presence in our communities, get them involved. But I think it also goes beyond that. I think we have to train our police officers for sensitive topics such as racial profiling, making sure that they are aware of the changes here in Charlotte. We have to make sure that we hire police officers that reflect our city and the demographics of our city, just as much as we should elect people in our city council that reflect our changes here in Charlotte.
All right, thank you. And Ms. Julie Iselt, your reply.
Thank you for the question. This is an issue that's very near and dear to my heart. When I started Neighbors for a Safer Charlotte in 2008, we got citizens together to advocate for our public safety and law enforcement and the court system. As a citizens group, we were able to get the city and county to earmark $9 million in funding for our police department, for our court system. I was on the citizens committee that interviewed the chief candidates, and we knew that Chief Monroe was the right guy for the job. I held town hall meetings for our district attorney, who is currently Andrew Murray. And the key thing is that those two men worked together on strategies that brought crime down. So, it wasn't just about the money because we know the funding has not grown with the population in our community. They worked on community policing, which gets into the neighborhoods, works on relationships with the neighbors. We've got to continue with that because community policing right now is at a crisis point in our country. We've got to support the officers, and we've got to support the neighbors with the services they need that prevents chaos from rising to a level of crime.
All right, thank you. Our fourth question for this debate, "Why shouldn't the civilian review board have subpoena power for individual testimony rather than just record review?" Once again, why shouldn't the civilian review board have subpoena power for individual testimony rather than just record review, rather? Vi Lyles, we begin with you.
The very first part of that is my belief about government is that we should try to impact at the minimal level of, I think, controversy and contradiction. So, the council has approved the citizen review board, having the inability to work within the system now. We did have a discussion about subpoena power, but one of the things that I think, let's try what we've done today. Put that in place. See if it works. We can always revisit more aggressive and assertive actions, but one of the things that I think we've got to do is understand that this is a system that depends on almost 2,000 individual officers, almost an entire system of justice inside and review inside the department. Let's work with our department to do what we do now. If there's a need, it will come up again, and that's when we can consider that option.
All right, thank you, Vi Lyles. James Mitchell, your reply.
I'm a big supporter of Citizen Review Board. I think it was a great concept that the city council adopted many, many years ago. And then, recently, about two years ago, I think we gave Citizen Review Board what I call more teeth, more meaningful on the policy changes we made. And I would like to make sure for the next year, so we review those policies to see if they are effective. I'm very adamant about making sure that we don't implement things and don't allow the time to see if there is a plus or minus in how effective that something that city council do will work. So, I prefer let's review, let's monitor it, but let's make sure, and I'm confident the current process we have in place will be successful.
All right, thank you. Mr. Powell, your reply.
Yes, the Citizens Review Board is a great check and balances area that we have. And I agree that what we need to do, we need to give time, when we implement new policy and new procedures, we have to have the knowledge and the skill to understand, hey, let's give it a chance. Let's see how it's going to work. You know, government is a moving target every day. Things change every day. And if we start to react quickly and try to make too many changes without understanding the fact that, hey, this could work or this is working, then we lose a great opportunity. So, I'm all in favor as far as with the Citizen Review Board, to give them more teeth. Let's see how much teeth they have in it right now.
All right, thank you for your reply. All right, we go to you, Pablo Carvajal.
Yes, the Citizens Review Board is essential, and I think it was a great idea that it was instituted because it goes along with my goal to renew trust in our local government. So, we have to make sure that an organization and a board like this does have some authority, some way to make sure that we are keeping our government accountable in the actions that our government undertakes. So, it is important that we look at ways how to implement better policies, how to ameliorate the way that it functions now, and also just review it to see if we need to improve it, make it better, or recommend for other types of similar organizations or boards to be instituted by the city council.
All right, thank you. Julie Iselt.
I agree with what the other candidates have said, that I think we're already tweaking it, we're already working on it, we're listening to the public. What we don't want to have happen is the police not to show up. And this is being talked about in other cities, that we've got to be careful about the backlash that penalizes a police officer for everything they do. And so, I think that the Citizens Review Board, while it needs to give citizens a voice, we need to make sure that we're also giving our law enforcement a voice, and we want to make sure that they continue to show up and they continue to protect citizens.
All right, thank you, Julie Iselt. Claire Green Fallon, your reply.
All right, civilian means civilian, not power of the government. It is an advisory. Right now, we have strengthened it. We have gotten Raleigh to agree to expand it. It's a matter of appointing very good, strong people to it who have a voice, who will come before city council. There is no need at the present moment. We have to look into it. I'm ambivalent about it. I have an open mind about if we get to that point, that we will go in a different direction. Right now, it's a matter of strong people doing the job they were appointed to do.
All right, thank you. Our next question, number five, is a yes/no question, and we're going to start over on my far right with Mr. Pablo Carvajal first. Simply yes or no. "Would you support or vote against expansion of the nondiscrimination ordinance for LGBT residents?" So, once again, the question is, would you support or vote against expansion of the nondiscrimination ordinance for LGBT residents? And that, of course, is lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender residents. Mr. Pablo Carvajal.
I would support.
Julie Iselt.
Could you repeat the question? I'm sorry.
"Would you support or vote against expansion of the nondiscrimination ordinance for LGBT residents?"
I would support the ordinance.
Claire Green Fallon.
I did, and I would.
All right, Vi Lyles.
I do support the ordinance.
James Mitchell.
I support the ordinance.
John Powell.
The way it was written last year, I would not.
All right, thank you. Our next question, "African-Americans, Hispanics, and other minorities are talking about inequities, rather, in housing policies and lack of economic mobility. How would you, as a councilperson, address these concerns?" So, once again, African-Americans, Hispanics, and other minorities are talking about inequities in housing policies and lack of economic mobility. How would you, as a councilperson, address these concerns? And we begin with you, Mr. John Powell.
Well, I would do what I'm doing already, getting out into the neighborhoods, getting out into the communities, and understanding what the true concerns are. When you're talking about housing, is it where they live, where they want to live? Are they wanting to move closer to their jobs? Is it an economic condition where they can't get from their homes to their jobs? So, we have to understand what the core issue, what the core problem is, and that's how we make our decisions and our adjustments. And the only way we're going to do that, like I said, is getting out into the community, just not sitting up at the government center, but listening to all these groups, hearing their concerns, and coming back in front of council, and then coming back to the community and sharing those thoughts and ideas with them.
All right, thank you, Mr. Powell. Mr. Pablo Carvajal, your reply.
Yes, we have to realize that here in Mecklenburg County, here in Charlotte, we have become a minority-majority city, meaning that African-Americans and Hispanics and other people are making the majority here. So, we have to make sure that we address that important fact. In terms of the housing locational policy, I agree with it in many ways, but I think we've got to focus on providing that type of program near locations and areas of our city where there are jobs and opportunities for employment. We also have to make sure that we consider locations and areas in our city that are hubs of transportation, whether that's the rail, the potential expansion of the streetcar, which I don't agree with, but other forms of transportation like our CAT system. So, it's important that we provide an avenue for these people, for our citizens, to have access to their jobs, to their community centers, and to other organizations that the city and county provides.
All right, thank you. Julie Iselt, your reply.
So, there's been so much discussion about housing and economic mobility, and I do believe that the council, in whatever form it takes after November 3rd, will address those issues going forward because the community has said that that's what it wants, to address affordable housing and workplace housing. And how can the city participate in that? As a city council member, I would also want to find out and come down hard on discriminatory member, I would also want to find out and come down hard on discriminatory lenders. Find out who in the community is practicing discrimination in their lending practices, and make sure that they're not participating in financing programs that the city sponsors.
All right, Clara Green Fallon.
We need workforce and mixed-income housing all over the city, not just certain areas, but all over the city. And that is a problem for the council, which we have to address.
All right, Vi Lyles, your reply.
I think we need to set a clear goal for mixed-income housing, mixed-use housing, and that we ought to have a goal in 2000, the council set a goal of 5,000 units in five years, and the council achieved that. We need to be very forward-thinking in setting a goal for affordable housing. But let me say, the most important thing about this idea is that we asked people what they wanted most about economic opportunity, and it was a job. And we need to create and recruit companies that are coming to Charlotte that would pay enough so that people can afford to have a home. And then the final thing that I would say is that we often talk about the federal tax cut. If we can make it possible that people can ride the bus or take the train to work, then we're going to give them a tax cut. It costs over $5,000 a year to have a second car. Think about it. If you could actually make $40,000 to people raising a family and have one car, you could make a difference in your economic opportunity. We need to make that opportunity exist.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mitchell.
Yes. On affordable housing, let me just share two great examples we did, and that was District 2 representing the park in Oaklawn, a great mixed-use community, senior development, mixed income. And you can't tell from an architect's standpoint what is affordable, what is market rate. Then you look at Bright Wall. That was a bond you, the citizens, agreed that we need to spend $25 million on taking a black community and making it affordable. So affordable housing is a great, what I think separates Charlotte from other communities. We need to continue to be passionate about affordable housing. Now, on economic mobility, I would like to champion some of the upward mobility task force, what they're working on right now. Charlotte was rated number 54 as urban communities. That needs to change, so still 38,000 people would like to move to our community. Job creation, we need to look at how we can create internships and make sure when there are city contracts, we tie to some job creation to every city contract that we approve.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Our next question is also a yes/no question. No developers have participated in the city's density bonus plan, which would allow higher density for developments that include affordable housing in affluent districts. Is the city too lenient in approving rezonings to higher densities, which don't include affordable housing? We'll start with you, Mr. Pablo Carvajal.
Can you repeat the question again?
Yeah, no developers have participated in the city's density bonus plan, which would allow higher density for developments that include affordable housing in affluent districts. Is the city too lenient in approving rezonings to higher densities, which don't include affordable housing?
I think that they ought to engage more, but I don't think it's--
Yes or no answer, please.
No.
All right, Julie Isold.
It's really not a yes or no question, I have to say.
Okay. Clara Green Fallon.
As a former planning commissioner, yes.
Vi Lyles.
I have to agree. This is not a yes or no question. It is a complicated issue. That's private sector, public sector, engagement of community. I--
All right, I'm sorry. Mr. Mitchell, yes or no?
Repeat the question, you can't see like--
No developers have participated in the city's density bonus plan, which would allow higher density for developments that include affordable housing in affluent districts. Is the city too lenient in approving rezonings to higher densities, which don't include affordable housing?
No.
All right, Mr. Powell.
It's too complicated. I would question, say yes or no.
All right, then we will move on to the next question. Montgomery County, Maryland has a high success rate using housing policy as a tool to improve economic mobility, the school system, and quality of life. What policies would Charlotte need to get similar results? And I'm going to read that again. Montgomery County, Maryland has a high success rate using housing policy as a tool to improve economic mobility, the school system, and quality of life. What policies would Charlotte need to get similar results? And Mr. Pablo Carvajal will begin with you.
Yes, I think it's important to recognize that we do it all the time, where in terms of where we choose to live, we look at how the schools in that neighborhood perform. So it is important that we, as we develop and continue to develop and grow here in Charlotte, that we provide viable and affordable housing for people in areas that are known or have good schools. But it goes beyond that also. I think that we have to encourage our neighbors and even our own neighborhoods to engage with the school systems, their presence with the schools there, so that we can improve that and in turn, improve the situation there. A lot of times, it affects the cost of your home when there is a good school. So it takes more than just the city government getting involved. I think it takes neighbors getting involved in how their schools function.
All right, thank you, Mr. Carvajal. Julie Isold, your reply.
Sure. So that's a great question, because people refer to that study a lot, and that Montgomery County program is based on choice. And you can't just look at a different state and say, let's do the same thing, because North Carolina prevents us from doing some of the things that they were able to do in Montgomery County. So at the state level, that prevents us from making us have inclusionary housing in some of our incentive programs. I think choice is really important, and I think that that's what's going to be the discussion on the school board side. We've got to figure out how to give people choices and education. And from a city council standpoint, that's got to be in housing and transportation. I would love to see all of our high school students and college students be able to ride cats for free. Give high school students an option to be able to go to a magnet program at a different school. Right now, transportation is the big roadblock in that plan.
All right, thank you. Clara Green Fallon.
Yeah, we're going to have to educate people into what affordable housing is, and that people have to learn to accept it and have it all over the city, because that will change the school system. Without that, you're not going to change anything.
All right, Vi Lyles.
I have to really think about Montgomery County. The study there, just think about it. Montgomery County is not diverse like Charlotte is in terms of who lives here. Their income levels are much higher, and what they're trying to do is have the ability for people to live in their community. But I also think that study indicates where we could be if we don't take action. So there are some things that I think are really important about acting on. First, we need to talk about our inventory of governmental-owned land. The school system has begun a surplus property review. The city ought to look at that, and if there's any opportunity to buy land in a school that would create an opportunity for affordable housing, we ought to take that step. We also ought to look at where the state has not been doing the financing for affordable housing, and we need to take the bonds, the citizens approved, and use that money to close that gap. And then the final thing that I think is that we've got to start having a conversation among our three levels of government and close the silo, so we can achieve the goal of having a great educational system and a great community.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mitchell.
I think one thing the city can do, we really need to look at our area plans, our neighborhood plans, especially when it's around by a CMS school. Look at those plans. Let's make sure our plans are diverse in what type of development we want to occur. Secondly, right now, when we approve a zoning, we look at the overcrowdedness. Are we creating overcrowdedness at a school? And maybe another criteria we need to look at or create is, are we approving a plan that would create diversity for a school? So we do control on the city council, the development, and maybe we need to look at it more carefully and make sure the development can be more diverse. Where our hands are tied, a lot of times, developer would just say, we're going to give market rate or affordable rate, and it's still a struggle. Is it a diversity plan? You know, one thing is clear. If we don't make sure the districts and our neighborhoods are safe or quality, then you can continue, we're going to continue to experience the problem we have in CMS. But I do think collaborative effort is the key, and making sure we all sit at the table and we come up with one vision, where a student can go to a great school, live in a great neighborhood.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Mr. John Powell.
Yes, I agree. The housing policies need to be addressed. And what we need to look at when we're talking about housing policies, what we can do as far as city council, is exactly something that's going on right now. Last night at the city council dinner briefing, we were shown and talked about the development over the Eastland area. What's under contract right now, or going under contract shortly, is part of that land is going to be sold, hopefully, to CMS and create another school. You have great opportunities and pockets all around the city that we can, together, work with the city council, with county commission, and school boards, removing these silos to do what's best for our entire city. So this is where we need to focus. We need to focus on how we can utilize our property in the best way to afford affordable housing for everyone close to the schools.
All right, thank you, Mr. Powell. Our next question will go to Julie Isold first. The question is, neighborhoods are a vital part of the larger community. What will you support to help them thrive? Once again, neighborhoods are a vital part of the larger community. What will you support to help them thrive?
So that's a good question, because I think one of the most interesting things about Charlotte is the different nature of different neighborhoods. If you want to live in a neighborhood where you can walk and bike, you can live in Plaza Midwood and Elizabeth, where people really value that. There's other communities that are further out that people want to get in their cars and drive. So I think that we've got to, through our neighborhood development committee, we've got to work on giving neighborhoods power and giving neighborhoods voice and encouraging neighborhoods to have a voice. I don't always see certain parts of Charlotte have their neighborhood groups come to city council meetings and speak up and get to know what's going on at the city level. So I think we've got to really empower our different neighborhoods and neighborhood leaders to work together for the values that they hold and that they want to see supported.
All right, thank you, Ms. Isold. Clara Green Fallon.
All righty, I founded the Northeast Coalition, which was a coalition of homeowner groups. And I did it for a reason. It's up at university, and our people never went down to Civic Center. It was a foreign place to them. So I brought Civic Center to them. The mayors came up, the police chiefs came up, and explained to the public what was going on. I've revived it. We're in the process of restoring it, because the police chief asked me to. It's important to the neighborhoods that they have one place where they all, the presidents, come together, and the people from the neighborhoods come together and know what's going on in the city, so they can push for the things that they think of as value to them.
All right. Once again, the question is, neighborhoods are a vital part of the larger community. What will you support to help them thrive? And we go to Vi Lyles.
I believe safe neighborhoods are great neighborhoods. I also believe that we have wonderful neighborhoods that need to retain what makes them special. Some of the times, I think we do forget, though, that part of safety is connecting sidewalks, making sure there are walkable routes. Another part of it is traffic calming, where you've got people in Charlotte driving very quickly through a neighborhood. How do we actually make it possible for people to live there without feeling like they live on the Indy 500? And then the final thing that I think is that when we are having these transitional neighborhoods in our urban areas, that one of our affordable housing policies ought to be to acquire properties that the seniors have and do a reverse senior mortgage, so that they can stay in their homes, even when the cost of their house is increasing, their taxes are increasing because their value increases. So we've got to figure out a way to keep the people that made our neighborhoods great in their neighborhood.
All right, thank you, Mr. James Mitchell.
I think one thing neighborhood would like to do, have their leaders to listen. That's why I had more town hall meetings, going to neighborhoods and listening. And it clearly said, we need more sidewalks. We want to make sure we have a crime watch, a safe neighborhood. We want to make sure that we need more retail opportunity. That's why I built the Northlake Mall. There was issues on the Bay Street Road corridor, and the neighborhood said we needed a new police station, a metro police station. And then, once a year, I would call all the neighborhood presidents in what I call the Intelligent Leadership Conference. They are more intelligent than me, but I would get their input from the president and say, how do we make your neighborhood safer and better? Because the true quality of Charlotte, it's not about downtown, it's not about Valentine, and it's not about Eastland. It's about our neighborhoods and how our citizens feel about their own particular neighborhood.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Powell.
It's all about community and neighborhoods. This is what I've been doing for the last two years, reaching out, going, and as a city councilman, listening to what the neighbors and the neighborhood has to say. You know, we have to be sure that these neighborhoods are safe, that people feel good living in their homes. We have to give them the means to get around town, to walk around the neighborhood. We need to focus on sidewalks for everybody in the neighborhood. This is a pride and ownership. As a native son of Charlotte, I love where I live. I also love all four corners of this town. So that's why it's so important to really get out and to listen to everybody, so we can bring this back. You know, I don't want to meet once a year. I want to meet once a month, and that's what I've been doing. So when people need to have a voice, I hope they would contact me and let me be their voice for them.
All right, thank you, Mr. Powell. And Mr. Pablo Carvajal, your reply.
Yes, community and neighborhood relations is essential for the growth of our city. So it'll take a leader that will not just sit at city council hall, but will also be engaging with the community, with the neighborhood associations, with the neighborhood presidents. So we need to be fully engaged in interconnecting with our citizens. The other thing that I want to talk about that makes great communities is if we go back to the basics of local government, we address the fact that there are neighborhoods that don't have sidewalks, don't have bus shelters, that need to be addressed. We need to spend the money where the citizens need it. This is essential, because if we don't have interconnectivity, then some of the neighborhoods in our city, in the four corners of Charlotte, cannot function as a neighborhood. So we need to be able to provide that basic tenant that local government is supposed to provide, and make sure that they have access to their jobs, to their churches, to their community centers. It takes government being efficient and no wasteful spending.
All right, thank you. Our next question is, how can neighborhoods that are targets for gentrification be preserved for those people who live there now? And we begin with Clara Green Fallon.
All right, I thought through this, because it bothers me. There are people that have lived there their whole lives and held those neighborhoods together before the gentrification, and you just cannot run them out, because they're the fabric of those neighborhoods. And there has to be a way that we can have a moratorium on taxes for them and allow them to stay in place and age in place without their taxes going up, as long as they don't sell or turn it over to someone, that they would maintain the same tax base, because you cannot tax people out of their homes that they've lived in forever. And there is a way to do it, all right? And I have talked to other people on the council about that. We have to keep those people. They are the neighborhoods, and gentrification takes that away. You just can't keep doing this. That was my big objection to the streetcar, because that's all about gentrification. It has nothing to do with giving the neighborhood anything.
All right, thank you. Vi Lyles.
The thing that I think is important is that we do have to go to the state this year and ask for a change in what is considered statewide legislation. You know, it works for a lot of the North Carolina, but as stated, the state really requires you to be 80 years old, and they will only exempt your property taxes for that under approximately $20,000. I don't think that that works in Charlotte Mecklenburg to keep our neighborhoods strong, and we need to go to the state and ask them to reconsider that. But we also need to do what we can do here. And we were at a senior citizens meeting recently, and a woman stood up and said, thank you to the city for refurbishing my house, for keeping me in my neighborhood. We need to continue our refurbishment program in neighborhoods for people that qualify. We need to get a program to keep their land and their houses safe and comfortable and let them live there. It's a really important aspect of making a neighborhood livable.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lyles. Mr. James Mitchell.
One thing I have to credit the city council, one thing we tried to do was get ahead of this, so we did a gentrification study. But then, as a district rep in District 2, I remember we had this before us when it was Seaverville community. We was building Mosaic Village, and Mosaic Village at the time had townhomes as well as mixed use. It would have been cost-effective for those citizens staying in Seaverville to have high-priced townhomes near their community. What did we do? We went back to the developer and said, instead of putting townhomes, let's put student housing. So now we brought in Johnson C. Smith University. We brought in the citizens of Seaverville. So now you have a nice mixed-use community to allow those seniors who've been there for 40, 50 years to stay there and reap the benefits of new economic development. So we can do it, but it takes this body, city council and a leader, to listen, and then react, and make sure our seniors can stay where they want to stay in their communities.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Mr. John Powell.
Yes, gentrification is a terrible word. And I'll tell you why, because we have people who have lived in their neighborhoods forever. They love their neighborhoods. They want to grow old in these neighborhoods. We should figure out a way how these people can maintain and stay in their homes. It's a part of Charlotte history. It's great to have new building, new growth. As a commercial real estate appraiser, that's what I look for as far as the highest and best use. But there's something more important than just numbers. It's really how it works within the community. And that's why we, as far as the city council members, need to look at it more in depth, not just a surface question, but understand what's going to happen to those long-term neighbors of ours being forced out. You know, let's be sure they're taken care of, whether or not they stay in their houses, or they decide to sell. The most important thing are our citizens.
All right, thank you, Mr. Powell. Mr. Pablo Carvajal, your reply.
Yes, it's important that we, as a city council, are talking not only to developers, but also neighborhoods and citizens, to make sure that the effects of gentrification are minimal. We do have to understand that there are people who have lived in these homes or in those neighborhoods for many years, and they're being surrounded by economic development, which is great. But we also have to realize that we don't want to weed people out of the city center, or areas, or hubs of economic development, and not address the fact that they're just as poor as they were before. as poor as they were before, which is now located at somewhere, somewhere else. So we have to make sure that our economic development is long-lasting and that everyone, all Charlotteans, reap the benefits of our growth, not just clear some of these people out of the way, especially in our focus on up-down. We have to make sure that our growth spreads throughout all four corners of the city.
All right, thank you, Mr. Carvahal. Julie Isel?
So tapping into the issue, especially with the elderly population, and not so elderly, the age group 65 and older is the fastest-growing population segment in the country. It's not millennials. We don't really have a great plan as to what's going to happen to people over 65 when they're forced out of their house because of gentrification and rising property values. So I think that we, and we know that people are healthier when they're able to stay in their own house. So I think that we've got to couple our development plans and what kind of development we approve with some of the things that my fellow candidates said, working at the state level to give us more flexibility to be able to define what we want in a neighborhood with a mix of, of older people, with a mix of affordable and workplace housing.
All right, thank you, Julie Isel. Our next question is, it has been suggested that Charlotte has grown large enough to require a full-time mayor since the position is realistically not available to anyone who needs a 40-hour, week job. Is it time for Charlotte to move to a full-time, strong mayor who is its chief executive officer? Do you agree with that? We'll start with you, Vi Lyles.
I believe that we have a system that works for us. I have not seen the need for the change. I think if that kind of change takes place, it needs to be generated not by politicians, not by people sitting in elected office, but by the community. And if the community asks for it, then we need to respond to it.
All right, Mr. Mitchell?
You know, we got a great city, and the weak former mayor system has worked, but I do think if there's a change, it need to be citizen participation. The citizens really need to come to the, to the city council and say, you know what? It's been working since 1971. Now problems are different. Now there's more emails. We need you all to stay longer. We need a strong mayor, former government. And I think the citizens need to give us that feedback. I think there's a challenge this year when we have the four-year term for county commissioners. So I think long as it's driven by our citizens, about getting the best system that will work to make our city better, I could support that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Mr. John Powell, your reply?
My reply is this, we're all civil servants, us sitting on city council or aspiring to sit on city council, as well as our mayor. It's our choice, it's our discretion whether to or not to run and to serve our community, our constituents. And so for me to say yes or no on this, I would say no. You know, we, we make it our individual selections to do this, and so there's no reason to further tax our citizens with a salary for a full-time mayor. Let's stay how we're, and work how it's working now, because it's, it's a great program that we have in place.
All right, thank you, Mr. Powell. Mr. Pablo Carvahal, your reply?
Yes, one of the things that I agree with the current system is that the mayor is a part-time citizen, part-time public servant, and I think, I'm sorry, full-time citizen, because they'll have a full-time job, preferably. They're interconnecting with their communities, they're just like anyone else. And I think that's very important, that they're in touch with our community, with the Charlotteans. And my goal is not to empower our government officials, but to empower individuals and to empower our citizens. And I think if we go to a system that emboldens and gives more authority to mayors, including higher salary, I think we are essentially not serving our community, we're just serving the interest of politicians.
All right, thank you, Julie Isel.
You know, I think that it has to be a community discussion, but my bigger concern than whether the mayor should be full-time or not is the whole structure of the council. We're, we're sort of this small-town structure for a city that's grown 40% in the past 20 years, is going to grow another 20% in the next five years. And I think we need to look at the whole structure and say, can we really accomplish a long-term goal, long-term vision if, if we have everybody running every two years? Maybe we should have staggered terms and keep it, or staggered elections, keep it every two years. I don't know, but I think we need to look at, can the current structure support a 21st century city that wants to be a player in the global economy?
All right, thank you. Claire Green Fallon?
All righty, we're a big city now, we're not a small town. You cannot have, who do we, who's responsible? Is it the city manager? Is it the council? Is it the mayor? Who are you going to blame? There is no responsibility. It gets put off, this one blames the other one, this one blames that one. You have to have one figure that is responsible, and if you don't like them, you get rid of them. But right now, we have a council and we have a mayor that truthfully retired, independently wealthy, who else can afford to do this job anymore and take the responsibility? It has become a full-time job, and it's time for a full-time council and a full-time mayor, because we're not going to get things done otherwise.
All right, thank you. And now, we're almost running out of time, so we're going to keep your closing statements, 30 seconds, remind you of that, and we're going to begin with Pablo Carvahal.
My name is Pablo Carvahal. Immigrated to Charlotte when I was nine years old. I'm a graduate of Harding High School and Queens University of Charlotte. I'm a business and industry specialist at Duke Energy, and I'm currently serving in our nation's military. I'm for putting people first and bringing progress simple. I want to bring a unique set of leadership and business skills to the table and ensure that Charlotte remains a place for opportunity for everyone. Vote for Public Carvahal this November 3rd for Charlotte City Council at Large.
Thank you. Julie Isel?
Thank you. My husband, Tom, and I have lived in Charlotte for 17 years. We've raised our three children in Charlotte. I'm a CMS parent. I will bring my banking and finance background to the council to help work on some of the tough issues that we're going to face for how to finance the, the needs of the community. And I will bring my civic engagement, having founded Neighbors for Safer Charlotte and been very involved civically for the past 17 years, to the council as well. Julie Isel for City Council at Large.
Thank you. Claire Green Fallon?
Yeah, I am Claire Fallon. I'm not going to give you pie in the sky. I'm going to give you two feet on the ground and practability. It's the only way you can run a business, a city, or a home.
Vi Lyles?
You asked us what we would do, and then you also asked us how we would do it. I have experience. I've worked in this area for over 30 years. I've lived in Charlotte for over 40. I actually talk about transportation networks, jobs, and safe neighborhoods. I work hard for you. I listen, I learn, and I act. What I ask of you is if you would work with me, I would ask you to vote for Vi Lyles, City Council Member at Large. Thank you very much for being a part of Charlotte.
James Mitchell?
Charlotte native, consensus builder, have energy, I have the passion, proven track record results, champion for economic development, and as my email says, public service is my business. Vote for someone that will put your agenda first.